Are we ready? Yeah, welcome to the May twenty second special meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. Our guests from the Young Planning Commission, our topic tonight will be the Young Joint Plan. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners or the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public, citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Christina, I'm the season's chair and residing district two. We're going to start our introductions here in the boardroom of both planning commissions. And then we'll move on to zoom for sound checks and introductions and then we should probably do a staff introduction tonight as well since we have. Some new people here, so we'll start down here on the end. You Richard.
Oh, Richard Lamstale, Young Planning Commission, thank you.
Anne Warmond, Young Planning Commission.
Bob Bauer, Young Planning Commission.
Carlos Torres, Young Planning Commission.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Derek Day, District One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
And do we have Commissioner Wheatley online?
Yes, you do, it's Helen Wheatley, District One, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a cold, that's why I thought I should probably stay away.
We're glad that you made it online, and we have Jerry Fugit.
Here. On Zoom.
Is John Thompson on as well?
Yes, right here.
Did I miss anybody? Well, maybe we can use some staff introduction, starting with interim planning manager Jeremy Davis.
Hi, Jeremy Davis, interim planning manager for Thurston County's Community Planning Division, thank you.
I'm Amelia Schwartz, Associate Planner at Thurston County.
I'm Gary Cooper, Planning and Building Manager at Stevie Young.
Great, thank you very much, I want to give everybody a reminder today that our microphones are very, very sensitive to all sorts of fidgeting and paper wrestling, so if we can be mindful of that, that might make the room public more. Put them at ease, with that, I hope everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Uh, we are going to strike Agenda Item Two, the approval of our meeting minutes from prior meetings, since this is a joint session and not our regular session. But having said that, um, we are, I would entertain a motion on it from the Thurston County Planning Commission.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. And with that, uh, I'm just gonna call for a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the Thurston County Planning Commission has accepted the agenda for time, Carlos, would you like to run your acceptance or your?
Yes, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Alright, with that, we will move on to, um, item number three of our agenda, the public communications portion, I see we have no guests in the boardroom tonight. And I don't believe we have any guests online either.
No.
Alright, it looks like no public communication tonight, so with that, we will start with our new business agenda item four, work section number one with the Young Joint Plan with Planner Amelia Schwartz.
So hello, um, I said it earlier, I'm Amelia Schwartz, Associate Planner with Thurston County, and then joined is Gary Cooper, Planning and Building Manager, was the Yom. So tonight we'll be going over the Young Joint Plan update, this will be work session one. Summary for today, uh, we're gonna go over the purpose of the joint work section, the summary of the joint plan, and then go over some next steps. So the joint plan is an element of both the city and county comprehensive plans, the last adopted joint plan between the city of Yom and Thurston County was in two thousand and six. So for this twenty twenty-three update, it is a full repeal and replace that we are proposing. It is based off of the twenty seventeen City of Yom Comprehensive Plan, and it's updated to align with current conditions and county policies. So the purpose of the joint plan, it is a requirement of the Growth Management Act, it helps fulfill countywide planning policies. It provides consistency and predictability for residents, and it aids in transitions when areas are annexed. The primary goals of this update are to include current conditions and updated maps. Align the policies with existing goals and policies within the city and county. And then we've got eight elements or chapters within this joint plan. Land use, housing, utilities, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation, environmental protection and critical areas, and essential public facilities. Alright, so the background for this, for the land use, which is the first chapter, it's the largest section of the joint plan, and it helps establish the direction for future growth of the joint planning area, the UGA. The land use goals and policies are intended to ensure coordination with other joint plan elements, regional plans, and countywide planning policies. The goals and policies serve to define the action plan for implementing the joint plan. There's some UGA characteristics, the Young UGA is approximately two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven acres. Uh, it is projected to grow to one thousand six hundred and seventy people in twenty forty-five. That's a slower rate than projected for the city limits. And as sections of the UGA are annexed, they will have their land use changed to more urban densities. The sum of the land use goals include promote smart growth to best utilize available land and services. Maximize redevelopment potential, create safely vibrant neighborhoods. And adopt policies that make the transition from UGA to city density smoother. And then the map on this page is showing the future land use designations as the county prepares for them, and this is if annexations are not. This next map shows the future of land use designations that are expected to apply following annexation by the city of Yom in the very, very soon future, these are being proposed right now. So following the annexation, it is expected that lands be zoned for urban densities, which is part of the annexation process. This map can be modified based on city leadership's decisions in the coming months. Alright, our next element is housing. So the main goals included conserve and improve existing housing in neighborhoods. Promote energy efficient and weatherized housing. And ensure housing affordable to all income levels. The capital facilities chapter is actually not going to be put into the joint plan as each jurisdiction, city of Yom and the county maintain their own capital facilities plan as part of their own comprehensive plans. For the utilities element, we have a few main goals, and that is including ensure that utilities and public facilities are environmentally sensitive, safe, reliable, and a reasonable expense. Manage stormwater and wastewater in a cost-effective and environmentally sound way. And increase energy efficiency and conservation. Then for the transportation element, we have a few goals, including these, create a well-maintained transportation system that is compatible with surrounding jurisdictions and transportation providers. Designing transportation system with minimal environmental impact and energy consumption. Improve infrastructure around schools to increase safety and access. Right, and then to the economic development element. Some of the main goals here include supporting industry, tourism, higher and vocational education, and retail. Coordinate economic development efforts, create an innovation culture to encourage entrepreneurship. And provide robust infrastructure through sustainable practices to support economic development. In case you're wondering, some of the, well, city of Yom planning measures might know this already, but some of the top sectors in Yom and the UGA currently are retail trade, local education, healthcare and social assistance. So as accommodation and food services. So some of the main goals for parks and recreation include create a network of park and open space plans that serve the residents of Yom and its UGA. Plan and develop a trail network. Encourage public and private efforts to provide parks, recreation facilities, and a recreation program. As well as conserve open space corridors. I can also slow down, so if anybody's like you're going too fast, let me know, alright. The next element is environmental protection and critical areas, and some of the goals there include protect Yom's natural environment by regulating development within critical areas. Prevent the loss of life and property in hazardous critical areas. Protect air and water quality and reduce pollution. Preserve environmentally sensitive lands, farmlands, forestlands, prairies, and rural lands through the development of compact urban areas. Their final element is essential public facilities, and some of the goals there include provide emergency services in a dependable and efficient manner, create a resilient region by improving disaster preparedness, response, and recovery efforts. As well as by expanding public education. Provide for the siting of essential public facilities, and so just a recap on essential public facilities. Those mean public facilities and privately owned or operated facilities serving a public purpose that are typically difficult to cite. And there's some more information in Thurston County Code twenty point oh three point oh four oh, in case you just get really bored. I'm also happy to look up that if anyone. So some of the next steps, um, we do have the option to set another work session before the public hearing. And we have June fifth as attention date. If you guys would like to go ahead right to the public comment period and start up, like request a public hearing, we do have availability for July tenth. Once we go through the public hearing and following work session and we get a recommendation, then this would go back to the Young City Council. Before going to the Board of County Commissioners for additional meetings and a hearing. So, June fifth, another work session, if you guys would like it before hearing. Or we could go ahead and get the July tenth public hearing scheduled, and I do have an optional motion written out. But that's okay. Alright, and then contacts is myself, Amelia Schwartz, so if you plan, I also do have some of my contact cards, if you be Gary Cooper, Planning and Building Manager of City of Yom. I can happily go back to any of these sites, anyone.
Of course, Gary, when is the study for the comprehensive plan to be completed, what was that date?
For the city's comprehensive plan, not the joint plan?
Right.
Well, we just, um, got responses to our request for proposals, um, but, um, gosh, it's the end of twenty twenty-four?
Shouldn't we have that available to us before we have another work study session with the joint planning?
Well, no, it's a different plan, but, um, but it's also very similar because the county, thank you, um, did the majority of the work on drafting of this plan, but they based this plan off of our existing comp plan, so it's there are many sections of this joint plan which are identical to our comp plan, if they, if they are same goals and policies that the county, that are consistent with the county. They didn't change, there are some things that changed just because they don't apply in the county, as you know, the UGA is the county. So for example, the city's capital facilities plan, which is in our comp plan, has been entirely eliminated in the joint.
Right.
But, um, but by and large, there's, you know, a lot of overlap between the two.
So you don't see a need to have that before us, like, well, we?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Now.
Do you have any questions here on this particular issue? Or on any issue with the?
Oh, and I would like to know, because I did see an email from one of the Yom planners. The acknowledgement page, we've already had, I think, three different people change since when I made this last time. So that will probably be updated much closer to the final version. So in case, you know, next month, we have, you know, staff change out or something, that'll be, that'll be updated by the final version, I'll make sure everyone's names are probably in there.
Have you taken on very much public comment on this plan yet?
Not yet, so once we set the public hearing, that's when that will get started.
Anybody else have anything for? Staff at this moment?
We do also, I, I have created an online open house, which is a story map, it's got more information, it's been open to the public for, I think, over a week now. And my contact information is up everywhere, and I haven't heard anything yet.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I have a question that isn't necessarily related to this plan, but as I look at the housing goals to prevent energy efficiency, um, the utility goals, increase conservation, energy efficiency, and look at, um, transportation goals. A lot of this feels like, uh, Yom's policies and goals are in line with the, the county's climate mitigation plan, and I wonder if there's been discussion of joining that plan as another jurisdiction.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I've done at the cities just since January, so it's possible that before, uh, January, those discussions occurred. Um, I'm pretty sure the city would be open to, you know, entertaining something like that.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what that means, what, what do you suggest?
Oh, I just wonder, I know that the, the county and then Olympia Lacey and Tumwater have all signed on to a, a climate mitigation plan, and there's some, uh, strategies and goals that they've adopted, and I just wondered, because it looks like Yom is at least, uh, according to your, your goals, largely in alignment with that, if there'd been any discussion of looking to see if if, uh, Yom could participate with the other jurisdictions and advancing those goals.
I agree, Gary, probably.
Yeah, like I said, and you know, resources being the limiting factor, um, but I mean, I'm sure we'll be open to entertaining it, if we could staff, if we could staff that, it would depend on just how much time is involved, but.
Commissioner Wheatley, did you have a question?
Yeah, while we were on the topic of, um, of sort of the rollout of this thing, I'm, I'm, uh, happy to hear that there's a story map, um, and would love to get a link to that, just to make my life easier, not having to look for it. But, um, I was wondering, uh, what the, you know, what the larger, um, rollout plan would be for, uh, doing the public hearing, and I just had a really minor comment about that, like, uh, the I think it's really important, uh, when communicating with the public to sort of explain what this plan is, that's about the UGA. Um, and I was just looking, you know, the, the map number one, uh, I'm wondering if maybe, um, before it goes out for public, for a public hearing, um, if there could be a better map that kind of makes it clear what the UGA is. Um, and maybe one that has kind of a satellite background or something for people to just sort of understand what what area the plan is covering, because map one is, is, uh, not, um, not too public friendly, I don't think, for, for people to understand what they're commenting on, so that's, that's just a, I guess, an editorial comment.
I'll check in on that, um, Helen, do you think that later the land use maps that are much closer up and show the main roads, do you think those are viable for what you're looking for?
They're, yeah, they're better, um, yeah, I just think about, yeah, that, like, if you're a member of the public, you know, trying to understand what this is all about, this, uh, you know, whatever, has some little roadmap elements to it, so people can kind of tell what, you know, where we're talking about, you know?
I think you'll also be really excited, once we get to that link to the story map, we've got an interactive map. Where people can zoom in to the properties they're interested, say their work, their home, their favorite park, they can actually.
Satellite overlay.
It, I'm trying to think if that one does, um, I can probably add that to it, if, yeah, once we get that link, hopefully get a, check in on that and see what you think.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the satellite overlay is a good idea, it always helps me, so.
Thank you.
If, if the comments about the map that is, um, on page eight that has the satellite, one suggestion would maybe just be the um, the line that shows the boundary of the UGA where it's green on here, maybe a, a more contrasting color. So, if you could pick it up easier. Maybe red or yellow or something.
Yeah, and I may see if we have some accessible colors that are better for people with visual.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments online, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, if we're gonna get into sort of the substance of it now, um, I did have, you know, they're, they're kind of maybe, um, uh, just general questions, but, um, I think for Yom especially, uh, when I think of Yom, because I'm not from Yom, I think of transportation. And, um, I, I was especially, I, I had a couple of questions about transportation. Um, one of them was looking at the, uh, at the, uh, what's it called, the, the, you know, sort of the, the zoning for industrial. Um, which is, looks like it's, I'm, I, of course, I'm not able to pull that exact map right from my eyesight here right now, but it, as I recall, the, the kind of, uh, the proposed industrial area was kind of in the, um, north, northern part, or the northeastern part of the UGA, is that, is that right, or am I not remembering that, right?
Proposed, it already exists.
Yeah, proposed, oh, it, it exists already?
Yeah, if, if you're looking at the future land use designations map, um, map number two. That is actually.
Sorry.
Yeah, that, so it already exists.
Okay, map two, okay. No, I'm looking at map three, the proposed, the proposed changes, i- if I understand it correctly, so map two shows that there's just this little uh, uh, little, uh, you know, the light purple, light industrial spots, kind, kind of in the northeast. Sort of near the river, right, or near that bend in there before the river bends there, and then it looks like.
Map three is actually, I wouldn't want to say theoretical, but it is very much long-range planning, and I don't believe any of the industrial areas in the future zoning after annexation by the city of Yom app are actually set in place for this time.
Oh, okay, well, okay, because I was just, no, I, I mean, because, well, let me just ask my question, because you know, it looks like the industrial zoning is all kind of these little spots in the north, and then there's some more commercial and heavy commercial. So the idea is to kind of, uh, turn that north side to more, um, commercial industrial away from rural residential, it looks like. And so I was kind of interested in the thinking behind that, and I was also interested in how that was gonna relate to the transportation plan. You know, especially as it concerns both Yom and the county. Like, um, how is traffic gonna work with that concept?
May, um, just, uh, Rich Longfellow and the Young Planning Commission, just, uh, real, real quick, um, on the industrial portions that you're talking about is where the, uh, byway is. It's gonna be going by Yom, and then also the byway is gonna be extended, so those industrial areas are gonna basically be parallel to where that byway is, and then also too, I believe that that's gonna affect what you're talking about on the transportation part. So it doesn't show it on that map, but if you look at the diagram three, you've got, uh, the state route running by there, and then it just kind of ends. That's where the current byway is, and then in twenty twenty-five, I believe it is, that the state is supposed to complete that, so I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I mean, it does, because, yeah, I was just wondering what the larger planning context was, because of course you want to try to separate the traffic as much as you can. Um, between the commercial industrial and the residential.
The, um, I guess some of the thinking behind it, and, and the map you're looking at, map three is based on really more of an in-house exercise with um, the planners and my director, uh, the public services. There, there is basically, I call it the bypass, that there's a bypass that's, um, already been in the planning stages for some time, and right of way has been acquired to do basically a loop, so if you're looking at uh, five-ten there, think of it as bisecting a loop that will eventually go around the city. So, um, we also have at least one roundabout that's, that's been funded for the, uh, through the current budget cycle, and possibly two to sort of try to start addressing, you know, what I'm sure you recognized as, uh, kind of a backed up five-ten at certain times of the day. Uh, so those, those are some of the transportation elements that are actually in the works. Um, and are really actually in certain phase of implementation. As far as the commercial location, it's really just based on some of the existing activities that are occurring in those areas and compat, based on the compatibility to existing uses. And it's an extension of the city's, um, central business district, which of course you don't see because that's in the city, so it just looks gray on this map.
Commissioner Warren, you guys on?
Um, I was, the idea of, of continuity of seeing how the, um, map three, how those industrial areas fit. Um, I did an exercise where I took our current zone. And then overlaid the proposed eventual UGA zone. And it's, it's really makes a lot of sense because it's contiguous. There's contiguous industrial areas. And also it's directly along the loop. So there is um, basically that is where the transportation is, are going to be with the loop coming in. And it also, uh, the, I guess you'd say the triangle that you can see on map three. Combined with another large triangle, which is the industrial area that exists today. Is zoned within Yom. So it started making a lot more, more sense to me when I put the two maps together to be able to see. As well as being able to see where the bypass is gonna go.
Thank you.
I may add for Commissioner Wheatley's benefit, the industrial zone property we're talking about is directly to the south with property marked hell pie on that map to future land use. And goes all the way down, so. Commissioner Wheatley, do you have more?
Not on that, but I have, um, a couple other things that I'm willing to defer to, to others and, uh, come around again.
Okay, we'll move to Commissioner Day for a moment, we'll come back to you.
So just so I understand the scope of what we're doing tonight, um, it looks like you are looking for, like, what additional information we might want for the next work session? And then to set the public hearings, that kind of?
I'm really just hoping to set a public hearing, get the public comment started, um. But I, I want to see if there was any holdup before we move on to that.
So we have an opportunity for at least one more work session and possibly two if we wanted.
Yeah, okay. I'd be pretty interested, I think it's on demographic data, um, for Yom versus county, uh, to think about. Displacement impacts, things like that, um. And then I think what we're just talking about with the overlays.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you were meaning by data on displacement impacts versus the county?
So, who lives in these areas?
So who lives in the UGA?
Uh, both, yeah, county and UGA.
Okay, so you're wanting data that compares like demographics, like race in the county versus the UGA?
Yep.
Okay, anything else in that?
Um, that would be, I think, the one I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, and then, so I, I also would like, before we move too far ahead. For guidance from the planning commission, I think I need, or I believe I need a quorum of measures to let me know that they want the more visible contrasting color boundary for the UGA map. A satellite overlay for the interactive map, an additional map in the plan closer to show the boundary. And then also to see if we have a quorum to add data about racial demographics comparing the Yom UGA to the county.
That would be a question for the Thurston County Planning Commission to direct staff on those four issues. Is there a quorum on, raise your hand if you'd like those four issues answered?
We can also split them into.
Can I add one more?
Sure, um, I think it'd be really, really useful to see, because we don't know what the current zoning is within Yom in these maps. And.
Within you?
Yeah.
We, we won't go over that in the joint plan.
I know, but being able to compare the current zoning, so, you know, we could just see, I, I mean, the, some of the conversations we were having earlier about where, you know, we've got proposed industrial butting up against currently zoned industrial, and that's what we want to see, just so that we can.
If, if we knew what this, the city zoning was.
It's all blank for us, it's just.
Yeah.
Black box.
For all we know, that could have been farmland, but if it was light industrial, you're proposing putting more light industrial next to it, that would be.
So this joint plan isn't proposing any? So this joint plan isn't proposing any changes to the land use?
We don't.
I guess I'm not.
Yeah, so the land in the UGA is currently zone one to five, where the young plan has worked since probably the mid nineteen nineties. Here it means one to five until such time as it's annexed and then transition to the urban zone that's in the city's plan for it. So it is zone one to five now and the light industrial spots on there are zoned by industrial now.
Oh, I know.
County zoning now.
I, I understand that fully and we've got big gray box in here that we can't see any of the zoning for. And knowing what those were currently zoned for inside the city limits would, I think, help us.
So you'd like to see the UGA zone, the entire UGA zoning for both the city and then the county portion together on one map?
Uh, that'd be, that'd be great, yeah, um. Yes. So the current Yelm zoning compared, like all this city limits, I'd like to know what's in there.
Yeah, we've got something there, maybe that for you.
Does exist, I'm not.
Yeah. It seems like the only real zoning changes we have are just a few minor small parcels that are on the proposed annexation zone change map.
And those won't be decided by this, that is a separate project.
Right, we currently have five annexations moving forward. Um, with the city of Yelm, they're all small partial annexations, three which will be moving forward and then to other which the counties or state boundaries, you whether you want, so. We do have five of them for right now, which are all shown on the map.
I guess also process wise, um, you know. As Jeremy pointed out, right now everything's one to five, so it's not developing at an urban. Style of development under those zoning codes, but. If at such time the city decides to annex it, then the city will decide. Hopefully, consistent with what's on the future land use map, future after annexation map. To just adopt whatever that zone is on that map, but at, upon annexation, the city can decide to zone it. Basically, anything it wants, so I guess I'm kind of, in my own way, kind of urging that. That we can get some deference on what zoning we want there when we annex.
Commissioner Halverson, do you have something?
It's totally separate from this, so we'll let this play out.
Commissioner Day, you got more on that particular issue?
No.
I have a question.
Please.
What, what demographics were you asking to be placed in this?
I was, I was interested, um, at the difference between. And looking at some of the like racial demographic data for Yelm.
Racial, why racial? Why not income and not, no, why do we have a ratio?
I mean, it could be both.
Well, we do have quite a bit of information, we're, we're just about to adopt our housing action plan and so we have, um. A trove of information about, um, you know, um, income levels, um. Distribution of income levels, all that sort of stuff.
That I can understand, but yeah, I don't understand racial.
But the county has some interest in, uh, many matters that are concerning racial.
I also, and I don't know, you know, this particular piece of it, I'm sorry if I keep interrupting, but. Because the UGA is in the county right now, it may be that that information already exists in the county.
You're looking kind of for a, uh, comparison of the UJ racial composition versus the city of Yelm racial composition?
Yeah, I, I, I think ultimately, but I'd really like to know is like what the, um. If it's probably finer scale than we could get, but. Like, are we going to rezone places with pockets of certain demographics into investment?
Well, we're not rezoning anything with this project.
I understand.
Good job, we want to move on to yours.
Yeah, uh, just a quick question for the, uh, Yelm planner, uh, manager. I live in Yelm on Mill Road, so. I know that the city has had a long history of problems with water rights, uh, and they recently resolved some of those issues. Uh, how does that play into expanding the urban corridor or the city limits? Because one of the things you're going to have to show is that you have sewer or water. Uh, public facilities and utilities available.
Well, I wish Cody were here, he probably know Cody, um. But yes, we did get water rights basically unlocked in the last year, I guess, that's why we have six annexations underway. Um, uh. I guess it was Department of Health and I think maybe Ecology approved a bunch of mitigation measures like aquifer recharge measures and the like. So it's already affecting it, we've had people waiting in line for years and years, so.
I know, Bill Rhodes really developing right now.
And, and that's one of the things I was kind of, you know, wanting to point out about our UGA growth rate, it's pretty, pretty low. But there's a reason, there are a couple of reasons for it, in my opinion, I'm not a OFM population demographer or whatever, but. Um, the fact that we haven't had the ability to, to do these rezones and annexations just because of water rights has kept the growth rate low.
Right.
And the fact that it's actually currently zoned one unit for five acres. But I think upon annexation and rezone, we're going to see a, a higher growth rate than what these projections are saying.
Well, I think you will too, which is my concern about water and utilities.
Yeah. Well, so, uh, yeah, and again, I wish Cody were here, but we have quite a bit of water now, at least from the standpoint of water rights. Available.
So how many more residential dwellings can Yelm sustain with their current water rights?
I couldn't tell you.
That's.
Ask Cody.
That would be something that I would be.
But I know it's a substantial number, it's, it's like enough now that we're not too worried about.
To meet your goals out to two thousand forty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle Wheatley, you had something?
Yeah, sorry, I'm kind of obsessing about transportation a little bit here, um. And, uh, another question that I had was, um, it actually was about the economic development. Um, and I guess like Commissioner Day, I'm wondering if there can be a little more, uh. Information infill or something, if that might be possible or desirable. Um, I, I see that the economic development goals. Is sort of structured around what, um. What Yelm does, you know, so. So I assume you kind of did a study and you found, you know, that retail is the leader and. Um, you know, you, you have those four things, retail, local ed, healthcare and social assistance, accommodation and food services. Um, and that the goals are to support clean industry tourism. Higher in vocational education and retail. Um, but, uh, I guess my question is, when you think about. Economic development, um, in Yelm. How big a factor is commuting, you know, I'm wondering, of course, about the impact of the, of the base. Um, and. And just. I'm wondering if, uh, there's a way to frame those economic development goals. And link them to transportation somehow. In terms of really understanding what most people do in Yelm. Uh, do they commute out of the city or is, is Yelm a receiver? And, you know, one of the things that triggered this thinking for me is, um, looking at the city of Olympia where I live. There's a kind of a funny, you know, the Olympians leave town to go to work and then other people come into town. To work every day, it's kind of a funny little transfer population that goes on in the city. Um. And, uh, it has certain, uh. Income levels attached to it, the people that come into the city to work have, uh, somewhat higher wages than the people that leave. To work elsewhere in a lot of cases, um, and so I'm wondering how that dynamic plays out in Yelm. And whether, uh, whether that was studied, the sort of the, the, um. The daily commute patterns and, uh, the relationship of that to jobs and incomes. In framing the economic goals. And I know that's a bigger question than just, you know, what do you do with the UGA, uh. In, in the terms that, you know, the joint plan between the county and the city. But, uh, again, you know, transportation is one of those things that has regional impacts. Um, and especially, um, with a, with a city like Yelm. I, I'm just curious what thinking went into that and whether, um. Whether that's something that we need to be thinking about.
Commissioner Warren, address that.
I can provide some information that has been gathered, that is in, in our housing action plan, that's still underway. There has been data collected to be able to show that, um. As it was described, that there's a population that, that commutes out of Yelm. And another population that commutes in. And it turns out that the people that are commuting in are almost equal to those that are commuting out. The ones that are commuting in are lower income. They're coming from outside of Yelm to have lower cost of living. And commuting into Yelm for work, either in the schools or in the medical. So these are in the agricultural facilities. The ones that are commuting out of Yelm. Have higher incomes outside of, you know, where they might go, whether it's Olympia. The base military, the actual percentages. I saw the percentages, but I can't quote them because I can't remember that much detail. But they are in the details of that housing action plan to show the, the percentages. Um, so some of this. There is information that would help, um. At least in providing more of the details that are being asked for by the, the commissioner online.
And, and is that for the city limits and is that in the upcoming Yelm comprehensive plan?
That is in the housing action plan, which looks at the current, um, uh, city limits. And, um. And of course, in meeting the housing action plan over time, we need to look at the entire UGA because of the size of. Uh, the number of housing units that are perceived to be needed by twenty forty-five.
All right. So if we could go through and I could get a majority on each of these actions that have been proposed. That way I know which ones, go ahead and look.
Our, um, manager Davis, did you want that from both commissions or just the county commission?
Just the county, since it's the county item, um, I believe the city of Yelm probably has some of these items already that are part of their planning efforts.
Okay, then we're just going to run through these with a, uh, hand vote on it, so do you want to go one by one without five of them?
Yeah, we've got a few, let me know if I missed some, um. I did get a little lost, um, Professor Wheatley, with the specifics of what you were asking. Um, so go ahead and pop in once I'm done with the list and please explain what you're looking for.
Well, um, well, let me just, you know, I mean, just that little tidbit of information, the fact that, uh. I mean, it seems like maybe Yelm, uh, as an employer. Is a receiver for the rural county population, it's a. So it, it's of importance to the, um, surrounding rural population and. Um. And, and I'm wondering if that kind of made its way into the economic goals as they're currently stated. It, it doesn't seem like. Uh, they really did, you know, like there's not a, a mention of supporting, um. I don't know, rural. Rural, uh, you know, there may, I, I don't know what that might mean, but it just seems like that. If, if somehow Yelm is, is playing a important role. In the county as an employer for the rural population. It just seems helpful for us to think about that, um, I'm not sure, I haven't really developed. What that means, except that it seems that it's important, uh, when considering economic development goals.
Why don't we, why don't we try and get.
Report to go, I think that's a position for the Yelm comprehensive plan, not the joint plan, which is county. And we're just talking about the urban growth area around Yelm. We're not actually talking about what goes on in Yelm.
Fair point. Um, I, I do want to get to some of the, if we're going to be tasking staff with, uh, specific issues, I want to get the vote on those, so that way. They know exactly what they need to work on, so. Let's run through these, do a handout on each one and see if we want you to work on them.
Of course, so map number one, make the UGA boundary more visible with a more contrasting color.
Yep.
Got it? All right, um. Add a satellite overlay for the interactive map and an additional map in the plan, also a satellite view, we can split that, I think. Sounds good. Um, if I can find them, racial demographics of the UGA versus the county.
And versus the city.
And versus the city.
And if friendly amendment to my, please, please, if we could, if you could find the, um, economic.
And we can always get the housing action plan draft to distribute it to our planning commission, because it may have the information you're looking for.
May I, uh, interject here as well? Um, I don't know if it's a friendly amendment, but I would like to point out that, um. In the, you know, there are several places where. The question of demographics may come up besides housing, like for example, on page forty-one. Goal four, promote good health for UGA residents. Policy four point three, identify the health and human services in the Yelm area for disproportionately impacted groups. And likewise, in, uh, parks and recreation policy, page thirty-six, policy one point three. Enhance the existing park network. The existing park and recreation network by meeting the demands of a more diverse population. Um. And I think I might have marked a couple of other places that I can't find, but. You know, I just wanted to make the general point that, um, that it's, it's there in the text. And so I think it's a reasonable request to kind of break that out and think about, um. What that means, not only for housing, though the housing language is in there too.
Sure, Wheatley, are, are you just offering support to the particular point of finding these, this information?
Well, I am, but I'm also, I guess, providing, so, you know, trying to provide a sense of guidance on, um. How to relate it to, uh, to what we're looking at here, that it's, it's not just the. It, it's important, and remember that this is to be, this is to help inform the public. Um, in preparation for the, for the hearing. Um, and so this information is not only of interest to, uh. To us, but, uh, you know, and how, how it relates to that. Interface between the county and Yelm, but it may be of interest to, uh, members of the public as well.
But the task is to gather that racial and income demographic data.
Yes. So, yes.
Everybody on the plan, mission that, for that?
Wonderful, thank you. And then the last one is a map showing the existing land use and zoning within the county and the city limit. And of course, the UGA. Sounds good.
All right.
And then are we comfortable studying that to like in here?
Well, let's, let's get to Commissioner Halverson.
I've got a couple more questions.
Yeah.
For the, the city planner manager. Um. What's being planned in Yelm right now for ride share commuter, commuter parking lots?
I'm glad you asked that because Cody Cole just joined and he can answer for me. And also I, I asked him to come, join, join in to also talk about the water rights a little more specifically than what I could. So.
That'd be great to hear from Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole, were you able to hear the question from Commissioner Halverson?
It does. It does get a little fuzzy sometimes when you're out here in virtual world. The the audio.
And admin staff will need to promote him to a panelist because right now he's just joined as an attendee and can't speak on the Zoom.
All right, hold on, it's coming.
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
He has to answer.
Awesome. So I just joined, so I heard the question about the parking slash ride share.
Do that one first, thank you.
Yeah, so we currently are in conceptual design phase of a central parking lot in our CBD area. The idea with that is to allow a central area for parking for businesses so we can start getting away or getting away from parking requirements in our central business district. That will have transportation access as well. That's our only plan right now and it's currently in conceptual design stage.
Yeah, I mean, do you have any type of operational agreement with Walmart? A lot of ride share seems to be parking in their parking lot and same with Safeway.
We do not have any agreement with Walmart. We do have the intercity transit that has several stops along through city, one at Walmart, but not a ride share agreement with Walmart. No.
So where is the commuter parking lot going to be? You said CPV?
Central Business District, yeah, directly next to our city hall. Right in the central air, central downtown, right where five oh seven and five ten cross in Yelm.
Where the where the water tower is?
Slightly off the water tower. If you know where H and R block is, it's right across from H and R block and it's an empty lot right now.
It has a city of Yelm purchase that?
Yes, we do own that property.
And you mentioned roundabouts, you have one in the planning right now. Cody, can you discuss where we are with the roundabouts?
Yeah, actually, we're working jointly with Thurston County, Washington State Department of Transportation for three roundabouts that just got funded in the capital budget. You probably know about those, one at Vale and five oh seven, one at Bald Hills and five oh seven, and then one in McKenna and five oh, or five oh seven, seven oh two. So we're working with county and Wazat on the Bald Hills one on our end. County is working on the Vale five oh seven one with Wazat.
Those are the roundabouts that you were referring to.
Yes.
Early in the meeting. So there are no others within the city limits of Yelm, because even the Bald Hills one is not within the city limits of Yelm.
Yeah, the Bald Hills one is in the city limits of Yelm. It's right next to Taco Bell, AMPM Chevron. So five oh seven used to be Five Corners.
Okay, that's where it's at.
Yes.
Okay, that's going to be a challenge. Okay.
Seven million bucks worth of challenge. Okay.
Has any consideration been given? I know the bypass is is increasingly important because of the possible, it's not possible, it's going to happen, the I five bridge situation with a lot of traffic being diverted to Mount Road and through the city of Yelm, because it's the only two ways to get get north or south. What consideration has been given for transportation when that happens, which is going to take probably three years or more?
Yeah, from our end, the, I mean, we just got to continue working with Wazat. We're on the, we're in the joint meetings with that bridge construction. But we, as Yelm, the city of, we can't do much on our end, except for just try to get our projects done and hopefully get the bypass up and running before the bridge construction starts.
Okay, has any consideration being given to put in a roundabout where the bypass comes in there by Walmart and five oh seven?
Yeah, actually, yeah, so that that will have a bypass there. That's part of the long range, or that's part of the bypass itself. There'll be a roundabout at Walmart Boulevard in five oh seven and then one at one oh third and Walmart Boulevard. So farther down, there'll be two roundabouts put there. The bypass also has a roundabout at Wilkinson Road, which is up by Nusqali Pines.
Okay, what is the timeline for that, looking at your transportation plan?
So there, with the funding that's now secured, they're supposed to go to bid next year during the spring. And the first two phases of that project will be those roundabouts at Walmart, five oh seven, and then the roundabout at Wilkinson. So that's, it is supposed to be going to bid next spring.
So the one at Walmart would, that's part of the bypass portion?
Correct.
Is going to bid next year?
Going to bid spring of next year is what we have been told in our joint meetings with Wazat.
Well, that will help solve so many transportation problems through there.
Yeah, hundred percent. And we're also in the planning phases of a roundabout, and Gary knows about this one, at Bald Hills and Morris Road, which will be a compact roundabout, which will probably come in at the same time we start the roundabout at five oh seven and Bald Hills at Five Corners. They have to be done immediately.
Right by tractor supply there?
Yes, exactly. Turning that little thing into a compact roundabout.
That's a big problem. I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you have, do you want to touch the water issue?
Yeah, I was, earlier we were talking about the water rights issue for Yelm that just got through its roadblock, I guess, about six months ago, and a lot of your developments got kicked into gear. My my question was to to Gary was will that, those water rights continue through the two thousand forty five phase for public utilities with the growth that Yelm is expecting to have?
So with our current, so our current projections have those water rights lasting until about twenty thirty six. And then we will need to secure more water rates. We're doing our water system plan right now, which will kind of line out exactly how many more acre feet we're going to need per year. But those are what our projections are pulling is about twenty thirty six ish is where we'll get to with the water rates we just received.
How many additional residential homes in Yelm can you build between now and twenty thirty six?
Roughly six to seven thousand.
That's more than your population increase, so.
Correct.
That was the heart of my question.
We did more than doubled our water rate. So we went from eight hundred acre feet per year to seventeen hundred acre feet per year.
That on your existing three wells?
Yeah, existing three wells, correct. We will have to dig a new well that can pull more water at some point, but it'll pull from our existing water rate. We just, our current wells, one can only be, our downtown wells, only one can be operated at a time. They can't operate jointly. So we will need another well to pull capacity at some point, but it won't have to be a new water rate. It'll tap into our current ones.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Cole? Amelia, did you have any questions? Did we task you the way that you're expecting us to task you?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I can't figure out anything, I'll let you know.
So then our next big question is, will we need two planning sessions or one planning session to finish up the Yelm joint plan, do you folks think? When we look at this timeline on second to last page or number?
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen on, there we go. Will we need this June fifth work session?
Think so. Does anyone else have any? John and Jerry, do you have any?
I would believe we would need to, based on some of the additional questions that have come up today, to make sure we have that data clarified and updated.
That that will be brought to you guys for the public hearing. So I'll have that ready. And then after the public hearing, directly following it, we'll have another work session where we can go over it.
Outside of joint plan work section on July tenth, besides the hearing and a work session, is that agenda fairly open?
On July tenth?
Yeah, or is that too far off to even know yet?
It's a special meeting.
That that'll be a special meeting, so it'll just be on this topic.
So there's a very real chance that we'll have an hour and a half or two hours to run through all this stuff after the public hearing.
And any additional public comments with that?
And now public comments. So I I guess the question to the planning commission is, do we also want that June fifth work session?
I I think we've pretty much just asked for strict information. I don't, I mean, I I don't think there's really any discussion that we have on the information we've asked for.
All right. Okay, so make a motion to not have something. No, okay, yes, I I entertain your motion. Okay, I'd like to move, set a public hearing for July tenth, twenty twenty three on the Yelm joint plan. Motion has been made, is there a second? The motion has been made to set a public hearing for the July tenth, twenty twenty three on the Yelm joint plan. And we will take this vote, voice vote. Any comments on this motion? Any discussion on this? Having no comments, we'll take a voice vote from the Thurston County Planning Commission and then separately on the Yelm Planning Commission. So Tasha, can you run that?
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
All right.
Chair Casino.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
I.
Thurston County Commission has approved that. You guys would like to run through yours?
We could do that, yes, let's do that. Do you have our?
Yeah. Commissioner Fugit.
There, yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez, oh, sorry, I got that on there twice. But Commissioner Loonsdale.
Long tail, yes.
All right, that motion passed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
That motion passed, we will be holding a public hearing for July tenth, twenty twenty three on the Yelm joint plan with both commissions.
And then before we move on, I think Gary has some notes to add.
Please.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out primarily one piece of this to our planning commission to think about, but then another piece for both. So it's a confusing title, probably. It's confusing to me, so it's probably confusing to the general public that map two, which is called Future Land Use Designations, is actually the current zoning. And the current zoning is one to five. And one to five zoning in an urban growth area is inconsistent with urban growth, their urban development. And at the same time, and and also, you know, the city and the county have different standards. So as things are developing in the UGA under the current one to five zoning, there's a potential to have different kinds of frontage improvements. There are all kinds of little things that come into reviewing a development application. So as Jeremy referenced earlier in the meeting, in the early nineties, when the Earth Growth Management Act went into effect and urban growth areas were established, the cities of Lacey, Tumwater and Olympia entered into an interlocal agreement with the county that the county graciously decided that it would adopt and implement those cities zoning standards in the UGA. So those cities have had urban growth, real urban growth areas since the beginning. The smaller cities like Yelm, Bekota, Tenino, I think they all in their UGAs have, Bekota does, well, yeah, 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 yeah. Tenino, anyway, those are still zone one to five, and that made sense at the time, but now Yelm was one of the fastest growing cities in the state. And so as things develop out there, things, uses are being approved, which are completely appropriate to one to five, that won't be appropriate when we annex it in. So we've been talking to the county and we're all on the same page. It's really more of a staffing issue. But, you know, in the next couple of years, we hope to do something similar with the county to have the zones that you're seeing here on this other map adopted by the county. And they will have a county planner who will basically specialize in Yelm UGA, just like they have for Tumwater, Olympia and Lacey. So all that being said, that's just sort of a future action that we really hope to see, and that's probably one of my most important goals for the future planning with the county. But I also just want to highlight to our planning commission, if you do look at map three and study that a little bit, because that is based on an in-house planning exercise. Cody was very involved with it. Cody grew up in Yelm. He knows everything about Yelm. And so he was really important in this effort to try to say what's what's relevant, where's growth going, those kinds of things. But just look at that map and I hope that it's going to be something that you will want to approve. That's all.
Great, thank you very much.
So you're saying that we may want to take that up at our next, one of our next.
Well, you certainly have the, you know, the authority to, you know, if you're looking at that and you're going, that that heavy commercial is just completely ridiculous where you decided to put it, or whatever, you know.
It's more like saying, it looks pretty good.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that.
Does anybody else have anything on Yelm joint plan stuff then? All right, with that, we're going to move on in our agenda for staff update.
I don't have any additional update that I gave last.
All right, we'll run through our our calendar real quick. June fifth, we will not be having, we decided against having a June fifth special meeting. On June seventh, we will have our regular meeting, which will be a work session, tentatively a work session on force conversion ordinances. Is there anybody that does not think that they'll be here for June seventh? I think I think we'll all be here. And then, of course, the other one put on your calendar is our public hearing for the Yelm joint plan. Hopefully you guys got that. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.